The hub.
Okay, it's live on YouTube.
Alrighty, um, it's three oh two PM on Wednesday, July fourteenth. This is the regular meeting of the Valley Board of Selectmen. And I'm calling it to order. Um, doesn't look like we have any guests for privilege of the floor. So we'll move right on to financial reports. Uh, we all got a copy of that in our package. Any questions, comments? No?
Um, I is.
Alrighty, uh, minutes review and approval. We all had the May twelfth, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting. Meeting minutes to review, and I think we all did that. Um, and Sharon has made corrections.
I had a question about your six D, uh, comment. I know that out, I don't remember.
Oh, um, yeah, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if you were directing that comment to me. It was just changing it from there to it's.
Oh, but what was what you use? Parod penultimate, second to the last seconds.
Yeah, I've got that. Sorry, I'm sorry. Like, I couldn't tell I was not good at excel and English in school. I, I thought I was looking for something other than.
Word.
Penultimate.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I was very confused by that.
Hey, Mark, it's not coming up. The camera's not coming up either.
And, and would you do lines instead of?
There were no lines.
There were no lines on this one.
Oh, I had one, number one, no lines.
I didn't have.
I, I did, that's why I had to do that.
And it's just.
Getting that.
Yeah.
Now on the screen, it just.
Oh, okay.
I read that.
Number, that's all.
It was brain teaser, but I wasn't doing much else, so.
It's the middle of summer, why do you want to tease it right? Should have some of that.
What is that? In your tab, we have it, it's plugged in.
Mm-hmm.
Everything's plugged in. That's, oh, yeah, it's getting, it's receiving, the lights are on.
Yeah, yeah.
The lights are on.
Is this, is this the camera one?
Oh, okay, yeah. I, I was kind of looking at me, and I was looking for where it was to it. And it was, it was a comment, not just.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Trying to save myself, right?
It is connected, it's.
I'm selecting it.
Working.
And it's not going through.
Well, that's good, though. You guys at our age, you should be getting things. I think realizing what room I'm in in my house space is never an teaser. But I'm going to the supermarket without a list. Yeah, that's not a good one. Well, are we on or are we out?
We are on, but it's, the video is not, um, coming in. So I am troubleshooting it. And as to why?
The video is not coming in that, that, so people are not watching us?
Well, they can hear you, but it's just a, it's a, just a, uh, an image right now. I mean, it's.
Where did you write your kids? I thought it was right here. So I was watching, uh, I wasn't able to go to the planning board last Thursday. So they, they actually still have the hybrid zoom. And the new setup looks very nice.
It does.
I don't know if we watched it all yet, but yeah.
Well, but if it, I don't know why it's not.
Essentially, they can make them hear us but not see us?
Yeah. That one.
Okay.
You're alive.
It is?
Yeah. Okay. All right, so can I have a motion to approve the May twelfth through two thousand twenty-one meeting minutes as amended? And the second?
I have a second, I want.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, Department Head Reports. We're up. Surprised to see you. You've got a full house over there, don't you?
It's very busy over there.
Yeah.
Well, camp's going really well. Been very rainy, so, but the camp staff has done a great job of, um, kind of keeping the kids active, tied with different activities and also going out into the rain at times. So that's going well. Um, Summit Session Two started today. So we had a successful first session of two weeks, and then the second session starts today for their two weeks. They've been doing things like today, they're out mountain biking. Um, and they've been going, you know, Hornet's, the Squam Lake and Vermont to the Vins, um, Vermont Institute of Natural Science, I think. Uh, anyway, so they've been having a great time. We had a nice Fourth of July. I'm trying to think, have we talked since? I don't think so.
We haven't seen you.
Right, okay, so the Fourth of July went really well. We had a lot of challenges that weekend with the weather, but, um, we were able to pull off a carnival, which was well-attended, all things considering. We did have to cancel our inflatables that we usually have because of the weather, but we are going to be having them come for, I think, our chalk festival early today weekend. So they, they require that you use that credit within six months. So we're just going to add to our chalk festival. Um, and then the parade, which most of you were there, was great. Um, awesome participation. And just overall, it was a, it was a long stretch of, of the work department, um, doing it, but every staff member didn't want to smell the faces, great. We have a PSU private group coming to use our field a week from Saturday. They'll be using the, the tent and some, they'll be bringing their own tables and chairs, and our staff will be out there doing like a campfire for them. And, uh, just wanted to let you know about that. I'm talking.
What kind of group?
It's the wo- women's, uh, the Women's Leadership Summit that they do once a year.
Oh, okay.
I don't believe they've done it for at least one year, maybe two. And, uh, it sounds like it's really, it's, it's fairly recent, the development of it, but it's, this is going to be probably the bigger year. Um, so we are sponsoring that event and making that available to them. Um, what else is there? The playground is, is, been marked. Um, Matt, who was our new seasonal maintenance person, he just started this last week. He, uh, went out and, and marked that with Jim's guidance. And, um, we're hoping to get that excavated relatively soon. And then, um, the, we haven't gotten a concrete date from the playground company, but they're saying right now, July twenty if, twenty-ish. So.
Next week?
Yes.
Yeah.
But we, I haven't heard a peep, and I've been asking.
Have you asked for a year?
Right. That's a good point.
So we'll see where that goes. It's frustrating for Jim and for me, just for planning purposes, not to know. Um, because, you know, he's going to have to dig a hole in the playground and then creep it off and make sure everything's like that. There's more coordinating for Jim involved with that, so. There's a lot more I could go into, but that's good. I mean, we're really busy for our evening programs. I, maybe you've heard it on the video call, our busiest ice cream social that I've ever witnessed was two Mondays ago, which really should have been after the holiday. And then we had another big one, uh, two nights ago. And then being on social media, saw that it was, you know, gymnasium was full. So people want to participate and be at the event.
Do you know what the mix of the people are? Are they property owners, uh, guests, family members, residents?
I think it's, um, I don't know the exact mix, but based on what I'm seeing, is, it's kind of like fifty-fifty. We're still getting a lot of the vacationers, but now there's a bigger group of, um, yeah, full, full-time. So usually, you know, in the past, it's been a lot more of the tourists. And now it feels like it's more of our, uh, new group.
Question of the mask question. Side of the building, whether they're doing it at the school or.
Yeah, the, the resolution, um, that Mark was communicating with the school board on is basically that they are still having that mandate in place for the school, and they don't want to confuse anything by changing it. Because many of the kids that go to our camps are the kids that go to the school. So at this point, we're remaining with, um, masks indoors. We do not have it on a hundred percent indoors, because if we are able to, you know, be spaced out appropriately, and, um, we're not mandating that, but otherwise, we are recommend inside. The campers are.
Yeah, I think it makes it feel sense to include that with the school's going in that building, so.
And I think that's what the other camps locally that have been making their decisions based on what the school is doing, because they're in their space. So it seems to make sense to follow suit, so.
Okay, great. That's hope things keep going well. I know we had like forty or fifty people show up for Peter and Wolf in the rain.
I know.
It was literally pouring rain. There were two tents out there and the.
That was wild.
And the new portico at the, uh, at the, uh, race center and, yeah.
Yeah.
We had a good turnout.
Yeah. One other thing I'd like to add is that, uh, Preston Carlin has been working with us to try to help educate Tyler and me on the different hikes that he has produced. One is the Saddle Hole Hike, which Tyler and I went out on one with him, so that we could, you know, sort of do it ourselves. And also the Town History Walk, he went, Tyler went yesterday with, uh, to press, with Preston to that, so. Just as an update to, uh, that we're trying to move forward with offering more of those hikes when we can.
They have a new map, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
They're really nice.
Yes.
They're a bigger area on the one side of the hiking trails, but then it's that small enough area that, you know, I've personally been really wanting for a long time. I think everyone does, will see that. For the, for people to come and even show them where to go, it's just great.
Right, right. Okay, uh, Jim?
Uh, what, on the maps, can we get some? Are you selling, selling them?
Yeah.
And how much are they?
Um, they are, they're, they're retail's twelve.
What's twelve said, I thought? I'm serious, but the others, is there a deal on them?
We'll talk later.
No, it'd be something that we would give away, is we give away the hike.
Right, right, and I don't, I don't, um, I, we would have to have a conversation about that later, because they're technically, that WBIA is maps.
Right, whatever they cost.
Yeah, okay.
I think I got, um, I have to see what.
A new one?
It's twelve.
It's twel- it's supposed to be twelve. I mean, it's a suggested retail price, so.
It's the red light discount.
If you have the patch.
If you have the bad, we're going to discount.
I don't know, that could be an error, honestly, because the old map was ten and the new one is supposed to be twelve.
Great. Jim?
Yes, um, Big Pine came down, so we can get that cleaned up and out of the way. Uh, rain, of course, has been a, an issue for us, but, uh, things are going along. Not much to report. Um, the lights are, are in for the new trail down, I snowed a bit of condos there. The two that were damaged. It's just getting them installed. Um, as soon as they can, it'll be here to put them in. Um, line striping is on the schedule. Uh, two problems there, of course, is the weather and paint. So apparently, they have problems with their supply chain. So other than that, things are fairly quiet. And I see we have a couple of things on the new business and probably old, old business to discuss, so.
Dylan?
Um, as Jim mentioned, the rain has been good to have. Uh, it's also impacted the lagoons. We cut them down pretty low, trying to keep away from doing breakpoint as long as we could, and that counteracted us doing that, so filled them up rather quickly. Um, we did the excavation on the raw line, raw man yesterday, kind of from the plant to the lagoons. And good news about that is it's, there's no signs of leaking coming out of the raw man. Uh, what it ended up being is there was no, there was nothing on our plant plans when the plant was built that showed the depth of any of the pipes. So it was actually the, uh, forced air coming from our blowers up to the lagoons, the heat from them create, create so much condensation that it would put sags underneath in the ground. So when we dug it up, we had, we digging it yesterday, his first scoop, just pulling the sod off, he already was scraping a pipe, and that's what it ended up being. There was nothing on our plans that showed any of that, though. So upon further investigation, there was nothing in the soil that showed any leaks coming up or anywhere around where depth of the sewer main actually is. Um, going to look further into that marking inside the pipe and talk to some people and see if they think, if it isn't a crack or if it's just something to do with the age of the piping corrosion. Because like, like I said, there was no signs of any exfiltration or anything like that leaving the pipe in that area. So, um, we're going to leave it for now, just because there's no sense in digging it. There's nothing wrong with it. There's no signs of anything being wrong with it. Um, other than that, we, as Mark had sent you in your packet, we started a magnesium hydroxide pilot. Um, it's going to help with removing the need for breakpoint, hopefully, or totally. Um, it's going to take a month to two months to see its full effect, whether or not it's going to accomplish what we wanted to. Um, it's definitely a promising option to help with ammonia removal during the summer months, um, as well as the spring months, if we were able to, we came to use it throughout the course of the year.
The non-winter months?
Well, we don't have a permit for it in the winter months for ammonia removal. And, and the problem is, since the temperature drops down so low in the lagoons, the microorganisms just, they really don't do much.
They go to sleep?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, so they just really don't do anything that they, uh, don't want to pour to death. But the heterotrophic bugs are totally different than what actually breaks down. So they do, they do two different types of mi- micro, uh, organism, organisms that do different things. Um, and this one is specifically designed for the bugs that convert ammonia to nitrate. Um, so hopefully, like I said, see good results. Well, no, probably mid-August, whether or not it's going to be a real big game changer for us or not, just to give it enough time to get pushed through the lagoons and bind onto the biomass and let it do its work, so.
And is this something that's going to be installed and removed soon?
Absolutely. Um, it's, the good thing about it, it's basically milk and magnesia. That's really all it is. It's an industrial form of milk and magnesia. Um, and chemists and engineers came up with it, because it's much less volatile in sodium hydroxide, which is pH is fourteen, as high as you can get on a scale. And it, what, what happens with that is it causes big pH influxes and dips because of the dosage. You can't add a ton of it, or else you make pH astronomically high. Um, so they came out with this, and it just is a very good chemical to use. And a lot of facilities in Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Connecticut are all going to this from all the other pH adjustment chemicals, because it's much more user-friendly. If you get it on your skin, it doesn't do anything to you. Whereas sodium hydroxide will eat you right down to the bone. Um, it's much safer, so.
Great point. Okay. Um.
Question, uh, how do we settle the drought status now?
We're still in the drought, as far as the latest update I saw.
Any thoughts on easing water restrictions, or we're not close to that yet?
We can.
We've got a lot of calls.
We have not received anything from the state. Um, as soon as, as we get something that, the, um, that we've changed the classification, then we can definitely look at easing it. But right now, as far as water drainage is concerned and anything else, there hasn't been any notification from the state that, that anything's changed.
Thank, thankless for this being in moderate drought.
That's correct.
That's correct. And, and it's going to take a while for the groundwater to recharge. If you look at the river, even given the number of pounds of magnitude that, it's still very little flood, um, anyway. So, um, and all the tributary streams and everything else are still.
Dry, basically.
Dry, so, um, but the, the rain we have gotten has been pretty beneficial.
Yeah.
It's been slow, and, you know, there hasn't been a huge amount of runoff. So that part is good, so I'm hoping that the, that the groundwater table is recharging, so.
What, what drought were we in when we instituted our method?
That's.
We're in moderate.
Went from moderate.
We're still in moderate.
Correct. It went from moderate to severe, then back to moderate. That's where we remain since.
Yeah, and then there's one category below it, which is abnormal, dry, or something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
We've, we've only slightly touched that normal dry a couple of times in the period that we've been in our game. Only then the next one could run back to moderate. So, I mean, we're hopeful, and, you know, we're supposed to get a little bit more rain this week. Um, but I, I gave you the numbers. If you look at that chart that I put in your packet, there is still trapped me about six inches from one-twenty, which was twelve inches from, uh, from one-teens. So we're, we're still. We're still down, um, eleven, twelve, I'm sorry, four and a half, four point six inches from twenty and twenty-one inches.
Alrighty, um, I think we'll go to public safety and cover also the speed signs at the same time, and then we'll jump back and go into some of the other things that we want for, um, buildings and that. So, yes, public safety.
Sure, um, yeah, pretty good, uh, Fourth of July weekend for us. Uh, very manageable, seemed like, uh, we didn't have really any issues. Few fireworks complaints standing there, but next to be expected, uh, with the amount of people, uh, people around. But both shows seem to be pretty manageable, we didn't get any, uh, any complaints or less than anything, uh, any big issues, uh, for either event. Uh, other than that, we, uh, made an offer for a part-time public safety officer, James Sullivan. He's a, uh, uh, resident, uh, relatively new resident, uh, to become a, uh, part-time public safety officer. Took his test for, uh, the PT to get into the police academy, uh, which is going to be starting in just a few weeks. Uh, so we'll be sending him for that, and that starts, uh, the upcoming.
Did they decide?
They needed ten, and there were ten that passed. So, uh, and I guess word that I got is he was pretty instrumental in motivating the other workers to make sure they pass, so they actually did that, uh, which was nice. But, uh, he, uh, moved up from Boston during COVID and, uh, with his family, and, uh, works from home, so has, uh, a lot of flexibility. Uh, and, uh, did very well on all of his tests. And it seems like he can be a very good candidate. So we're excited, but excited to have him.
Right, and I still have some of these comments on there.
Yes, yeah, uh, which is nice. We talked about that, that potentially with the amount of people living in town, that we might be able to assimilate a few here and there, uh, possibly, and that is one of them. Uh, he's certainly one of those, uh, one of those cases. Uh, other than that, uh, uh, Kombi Morrison just passed his National Registry for PT, uh, this past week. Uh, so we're just waiting on his license, uh, from the state of New Hampshire, which should be here any day now.
Is that basic or advanced?
Basic. Uh, so, uh, uh, very, very proud of him to, uh, get that, get that completed. Uh, it's a nice step away, so we're, uh, probably wouldn't have a fire academy for him. Uh, probably not till after the, after the beginning of the year. Other than that, a few bear complaints in the, in the campgrounds, but nothing really in town. Uh, just kind of, in town versus the campgrounds, I mean, I'm the other way around.
I think they'll come take in the trash bags again, from the town square on the weekends.
I think so, and I'd like to.
I haven't been able to find the trash.
Sure, uh, which is good, uh, that's what they should be doing. Uh, and hopefully, people are doing their, their job, you know, locking their dumpsters. And so as far as I know, we haven't had any issues. The bear problems we're having in the campgrounds is food storage issues, education. So, uh, that, uh, we talked about the radar for, radar.
Uh, I've got one thing, which, uh, I've, I've gotten Amber a few times, uh, which I can't fight. Property owners have given me a certain amount of stories about all kinds of incidents that have happened. Mm-hmm. And that, uh, it, it caught me by surprise. And I, I think what would help going forward is maybe if we got into that bi-weekly or monthly report, incident report, so we can see what's going on. And I think there's some patterns there that you guys addressed really well. Mm-hmm. But I felt a little bit foolish when I, I knew nothing about it. Mm-hmm. And in the past, I've known about it, so if you could do that, if that's okay with you guys, and get a week of those.
Nothing's very.
It, it might help communication a little bit.
And I know, uh, Chris said it's on a, on a weekly basis, so I don't know.
I know we used to, every, every other, once a month, you have the meeting, we get the report, we can see what came out.
Sure.
Was there something with Golden Eagle?
There are a bunch of things over there. And I wasn't going to say we're going to.
Well, I mean, we've talked openly about the Golden Eagle incident.
Well, this is one of the few.
If you have any questions at any time, it's very interesting.
Oh, oh, yeah, but this was in the after effects, as I said, this is still going on. I don't know if that person's gone, this person's gone. But it's just as we get into hockey and all of that coming back. And we need to communicate. And let, let the lodge know what their responsibilities are as far as.
Yeah, I've been working, I actually talked to a lot of us today.
Yeah.
And that is still ongoing. Uh, and what our activities are held up by, um, an eviction process that's, that's still going through.
I, I, it's not specifically that one unit.
Yeah.
It's, it's more of just, there's, there's been some cha- some changes in dynamics, hasn't it?
Yeah.
Alrighty, you want to talk about the three or four signs?
Sure.
Uh, so, uh, you have two quotes in front of you, and, um, Elon's, Elon City, uh, was running a deal uh, for two for one, uh, not a two for one, but a, a two for quite a reduced rate. Uh, you know, typically, they're closer to four grand each. Um, uh, they're running a deal for two speedboard signs for fifty-seven hundred dollars, fifty-seven nine times three, uh, which I thought was a pretty, pretty darn good deal. Uh, and, uh, Margaret, what those that you mentioned, it's one of my favorite things. They're definitely the same make, uh, same make and model as those. So I have, quote, a EC unit that will, that will replace the one right here at Triple I Road, because we have a car plug, we don't want to worry about batteries and that sort of thing. Uh, the second one, we envision being on Valley Road in a place to be determined. Uh, but my thought is coming from the opposite direction before you get to the athletic club or for, for school. Coming, coming the other way also. Uh, and since we're limited with power on that side, uh, the quote was for a, uh, solar, uh, human regular batteries for that unit. Uh, and with that, uh, we, uh, still have enough money to, better quote, for a radar trailer. Uh, and this trailer was well below any of the other, uh, other quotes that we got from other vendors. Uh, this one has messaging. Uh, even though the sign itself isn't a message board, it's, uh, it does have the ability to put limited three lines, and I think nine characters each of the message. So we can use it in that capacity if we need to. Uh, and that means Jim can use it, uh, or can use it, you know, we can use it, whether it's a, uh, special event for a closure or wherever it might be. Uh, just like the signs, they do take traffic data, so we can pull data from both the trailer and the signs. And that'll help us, um, really see, get a good picture of what's, what's going on out there when our peaks, we have a good idea of when our peaks and valleys are for traffic control. But really see, uh, and be able to hold that again, uh, you know, uh, pattern, our patrols recorded, so.
Do we have to put polls in, please?
Uh, the first one, no, we'll just use the poll that's already there. Uh, the, the second one down on Valley Road, uh, we'll have to put poll in, uh, but it's pretty. But it's pretty, comes with all the mounting hardware, so putting a pole in the ground will be pretty low cost.
Question from just reading it for me quickly, do you know anyone who's had these and has had these out there for a couple of winters? It, it talks about a, uh, at only nineteen pounds, this robust A B S. And I'm just wondering what kind of abuse it can take compared to what we've got out there.
Yeah. Uh, I don't, uh, I, I don't, I don't know, they, they're. Uh, a little while, not sure if. Yeah, those are.
Unless I've been going so fast, I didn't see them.
They've been new this spring, uh, but they do come with a warranty, uh, so, and they're pretty reputable company, they're one of the bigger names.
I'm, I'm just concerned from the first digs, and kids can just unscrew it and take it, that's the only way to make it happen. Doesn't seem like it's a threatening or menacing.
Yeah, well, it, it's good, so, it, I think it's good just because of what they're making them nowadays. Um, I think originally, we, we spent almost eight grand on just the one out there back, and then what, another one was like fourteen years ago?
And that one, I mean, well, I'll do respect to that one out there, it's held up very well.
The company's out of business now, but it's. It lasted a lot longer than we.
There's nothing to salvage or. Or if Brooke wants to run a baseball pitch. Radar.
Yeah, it's a little big and, it's a little big and bulky.
Yeah.
It takes a power source.
Yeah.
So I'm asking myself, are we just gonna jump it, or are we just gonna keep it in?
I'd say keep it in reserve, you never know.
Keep it in reserve.
Unless those kids show up that Mike's talking about. How much space it gonna take and you can just report it, so. Not to bid me, someone wants one for home.
Okay, do we need a motion on this? Um, okay, I move that, uh, we accept the bid for the, uh, two Elon, um, speed, speed signs, which is solar, and put this plug in, and also for the Noble speed sign. While we finish the budget, that was allowed for these items, can I have a second?
I'll. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, let's go work on, uh, the capital projects. I guess the road were paving and the pickup truck and those kind of things that were.
Yep, you have two beds, one's, uh, one is for Ford F two fifty, same type of, uh, same type of pickup that we have presently, with a Fisher bomb. And the other is for a Ram, uh, twenty-five hundred, uh, with a valve. Ram is, um, a little bit more money than the Ford. The Ford is telling me that, um, hopefully they can get it to us less than a hundred and eighty days, and the Ram is saying a hundred and eighty days. The other thing is, is that, uh, Littleton would be the dealer of choice for, um, any type of maintenance or service that we'd use on it. And then, uh, of course, the new car Ford in Plymouth would be for the Ford, so it's a lot quicker to go to Plymouth. Go to Swinburne Park if needed.
The only hesitation on the Ford is availability.
Yes.
Same on both. Yes, but we did better with the Ram product on the, um, one time than we did on the last Ford one time. Uh, and we waited over a year on the one time from Ford before there was a trip. And we also traded the owner of Ford pieces, uh, as a gift in my prime, the last two. Here's what's expected, and we are here in the city outside of project, which makes. And we'd like to acknowledge, but we all have to understand that, think that there is the existing truck. Um, I. Don't really have a preference. I would, I would, I would go with the gas on this, I think, because, uh, you know, you've got enough vehicles that, uh, it's not just the diesel, it's the D E F fluid that we have to keep on hand. And, uh, you know, for, uh, emissions, that all the new diesels are running. Uh, with, for, for the purpose of this truck and for what the type of work it's going to do, I don't think it's necessary to have a diesel. If we're doing a lot, if we had a heavy trailer and we were moving equipment with a trailer with this truck, then I would say, yes, go with the diesel. I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, so, do you have a motion for us to go to the Ford? Um, I move that we, um, accept the bid from Ucar for the Ford, the five, and for thirty-six thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars, which is within our least budget of forty-five thousand. I have a second.
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And your salesperson is a bear, she will go with it for you.
I hope so, she's a, she's, uh, awaiting my email.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, exactly, she may have to steal the truck.
Yeah, I, I purchased from her a couple of times, and she's just really, she's worked for a number of different Ford dealers, and she just, she knows how to work the system.
Good.
Right. Because this is something we're talking about, Lisa. Right, yes. Alrighty, uh, let's go on to the last pass, Valley Road, what's yours?
So we have the two beds, very competitive, watching, and, uh, didn't answer any questions that you might have about the specs, but, uh, I think the one we're really treating for selling each other is awesome. So, um, I have no problem making a recommendation for.
I can double board immediately.
Well, as soon as we get them scheduled, yes. I, it's not gonna be something where we're gonna wait till.
No, no, that's.
The, uh, uh, I did put in the R F Q a time limit for final pay.
And I think that was the end of September or all the year.
Yeah.
For at least five seconds. Um, which puts us significantly ahead of where we've been the last couple of years. Because we've been doing. So, uh, since we piece there too, um, just for your information, um, we have the four H's that are all existing. Um, but I'm gonna have to be careful if we, so, um, the, the, um, House and the Senate are supposedly gonna come to some kind of agreement here fairly quickly. I heard that the House was gonna vote today or tomorrow, and the infrastructure plan. Um, we won't be in a position where we'll be able to do any of the big aid project this year. Um, however, so if we want to do something like the, um, the Guard Rail project or something like that, that would cost more than the twenty-seven hundred dollars. We would have to budget a amount for the twenty-two million to make up the difference. But we may have other road projects, but that's on the menu. So, it just, this is only gonna give us about twenty-five hundred dollars when you subtract that the town portion of the major project. So I just wanted to hold on back to, so, going with the twenty-two million.
What do we have, do we have anything in the, uh, road maintenance reserve account?
That's how the.
Kind of that is.
That's, yes, and that's, that's seventy-five, seventy.
And it could not be a problem with the potential construction going on beyond that.
No, this will actually.
That is actually one of them.
No, no, no.
Oh, the new move development, I thought you meant the house.
Other, yeah, right, for that part, I think we have to have a separate, there's a separate discussion. Because I did not, the number, right, the two, two hundred and, uh, eighty-two thousand dollars doesn't already fit in there, or it doesn't fit in here. So, right on the list. You know, there isn't really any, because there's, there's engineering for the, um, big project that still has to be done. So, um, we are, if we do something for the green, we can have, it should be the further design work, that will, you're willing to raise that.
I also had in mind, um, any issue with, uh, with construction view with passing over these portions of the road and so forth, with the news.
No, all of this work is loss pass.
Up, from the intersection, just up past the golf club drive. Except you are gonna get some construction done in the next year after, or one or two months.
Right, because that shouldn't be.
That, that shouldn't be too, too bad, because with the, the elimination of the island, will make a huge difference.
It's kinda like the charms that fall to pass, you know, by one path.
So, yeah, fifty-two thousand and sixty.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to accept the L A Johnson bid of forty-two thousand seven hundred dollars to, uh, do the roadwork on loss pass route.
Number seven, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, do you wanna talk about the number of, uh, construction?
We, we've received this, Mr. O'Brady sent us the, or actually called for this, we sent them, we had some conversations about it. He understands the limitations of the two hundred and fifty foot setback, there's, uh, this land is the flat land between the river and the Mad River Dam near, uh, which is, um, uh, this. This is the, the left of the Russian, so there's nothing on there, uh, there's some trails, but they're not established trails, they don't really reach, so. To where.
Tyler Spring path is one of the ones in the.
Right, but that isn't.
No, it's, actually, it goes down, it, it, when they built Mad River.
So you're thinking.
So they taste, they have an access, you can see it on the road there next to the Mad River sign, and then it comes over here and goes down and goes around like this, and then comes up behind Tyler's Road. So there's a path there, and I want this one, it's just, and it's on the path line, so, yeah. So, um, the only comment that I made, are they gonna be cutting down anything between the path and the river?
I don't believe so, then, the first two hundred and fifty feet, they're very limited, they can't squeeze down over a certain.
Over a certain, like, four or five yards.
What they want is, they want views from the pond, because they're up on the hill, the majority of the cutting's gonna happen on the, the actual bank.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be down by the river.
Yeah.
I don't anticipate that many, if any of those trees will be cut, the thinning of the cutting's gonna happen up by the.
I'm, I'm, I'm available as long as it's happening on, you know, the upper part over the trail, there are some unbelievable trees along the river there. I mean, there's, there's trees that the three of us, if we held hands, maybe we could get ourselves around the trunk, and those, you know, maples with multiple trunks and all of that kind of thing. But they're on the area between the path and the river, and where they're cutting is above the path, correct? Okay, I see you made reference to a big ugly pine, I'm like, oh, I hope it's not.
Um, all cutting and thinning has to happen from the trail to the pond.
No, it's, it, as long as they're on that side, they come up the trail.
Yeah, the, the big ones, they, big ones within two hundred and fifty feet of the river, I would not be able to be taken without going to an act of compass.
Well, that's good, it is a nice board, you can definitely down there, I've never been able to figure out where Tyler's Spring is, but it's somewhere down there. But I was told, and they say this on the historical trail, um, tour, that when they put the Mad River condos in, they had to redirect the Tyler Spring Trail, because it used to go right through where the Mad River condos are right now. So now it goes around and down, up in Tyler's Spring, yeah. Okay, do we need a motion on that, or just say?
No, if you're okay with it, Jim and I will.
Alrighty, um, anything else on here we need these guys?
Bridge lights.
Bridge lights. What about the bridge lights?
Again, complaints up there.
Well, we, we got a couple of comments, um, during the Fourth of July about the rock. It's about thirty-four, we lowered the, the output for the lights by about fifty percent.
Yep.
Um, I wanted to get feedback from you as to whether or not we feel that they're adequate. Um, you know, that the reductions we've made have been adequate, or if you want them further modified. But we had, as part of that conversation when we lowered the, the light, that, you know, we've also had from time to time complaints that it was too dark. Um, and that, you know, people didn't feel safe crossing the bridge or whatever, which was part of why we went with the lighting. You know, and if you want the lights to look exactly like the lights on the path, we could look at those, uh, type of fixtures, or if you want us to.
Yeah, I've never.
I don't bother.
Yeah, I don't see it, I, I've never had any.
It strikes me as bright.
Well, we can add it to the agenda some other if you want.
I just, I just texted us, it was out on.
Yeah, and, and that's great, like, that's.
And, and they don't, they do rock it.
Oh, they rock it.
Out, it's not.
Right, it's not half.
We, we went with the.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me ask this question, is this under pressing, bring up this one about the winter lights a lot in this, wasn't it?
Well, I think that that's a legitimate discussion. I mean, that should be part of your consideration, it's up to you. I think from a technical, I mean, short of getting a writing engine, well, surveys around. It's always going to be personal preference more than anything else.
And you had two people who said they could write.
A couple of people, one person looked.
Are any of them up for it, so to convict.
One became, one that has talked to us since.
Is, but they are brighter than.
And they are lighter than what was there, but that was purposeful because, because there were comments about it not being safe to pull up with the lights. Which was one of the reasons why we designed the lights. So if you take a look at it, we'll put it on the agenda for Monday.
Um, is that everything we need?
Um, well, we, we have, uh, Dylan's already talked to you about the Ross sewer lines. Um, unfortunately, we have no deals for the water project. Um, how many people's got it? We have four people pulled plans, we, we advertised to seventeen, seventeen contract companies. Um, we have four people pulled plans, we had one person at the pre-bid conference. Um, and, um, we have no review. So um the engineers right now are following the four firms that pulled plans. They're gonna, well, we're not quite at the making stage yet, but we are going to find out for you by Monday why they did not do it. Um, and then we can discuss. Jewel. And you're gonna meet. But now the discussion on Monday will be what you want to do to the package. Um, so. Yeah, we'll see what they say, and that's not one coming to.
I hate to say this, but a million dollars isn't what it.
Exeter, well, in, in, well, one of the engineers made a good, they just, the Exeter sewer system, which I think was like, what do you say, four million, I think, dollars project. They only have so far nine firms for, um, more than a million dollars. Uh, and they have, what do you say, two or three attend their pre-bid conference. Probably not.
And it's this thing, these folks just don't have anybody to do.
Well, that's what we're trying to find out.
Do you see something?
It's just speculation at this point, there's.
Somebody told me Santos Village is paying twenty one dollars an hour for kids to be, to work at some. They probably still can't find people.
Well, something, that's, is, we, I got stuck in a burning community, I have two people working there. And after twenty minutes, they said, we just can't, I'm sorry, we just can't.
It's crazy, just that, that shortage is out of control.
Well, this is going to try again.
The whole time.
Well, for the water project, and that's the other part of what the engineer, some. That we need pulling out and doing a smaller part of the project. Smaller pieces, they just can't do the whole thing once. So we're gonna, we'll find out for you by Monday and give you some options for doing some of the work. The, the critical emergency work that we need to have there is because we need, we need to have that emergency facility in place in case. Something happens to the.
And the water line, Ross and River, it's just like this, you know, not normal, I think it was probably number one. You know, that's sure that we're safe.
Yeah.
There's water for it.
For now.
So anyway, um, we will give you additional information about that. Um, and then we have before Gently, so I wanted to talk about um the rain peak development. Um, we are moving our, uh, our planning board consultants as that with the developers. Um, she said the plan is very good and she sees no reason why it cannot be submitted um by next week. So that it will be on the agenda for the August planning board meeting. And it will be both the submission of subdivision site plan applications and public hearings. So the plan is completed, so that she feels the planning board is going to be able to consider it or completion and conduct the public hearing in August, which means we're going to need to have some um approaches that we want to take when it comes to the road and the side.
And the parking over there.
And parking and everything else.
Could someone address specifically, give me the sidewalk issue, explain in real basic terms, what would you have to do with as far as the sidewalk goes over there?
Yeah, so the, correct me if I'm. So the, the project is, so the existing, um, the existing building is here. When they installed it, they worked on this little piece of side, okay?
Divine day.
The developer, and with, with our cooperation, but we didn't change anything at that time, we just kind of shooting for the granted work and have.
There was discussion between the fire number, correctly, there was discussion between it being a four footer, a six footer, an eight foot sidewalk.
And so we haven't put that in the side, so they didn't make him.
And that's a sidewalk with out.
That's correct, and it's got the.
Green space, it has a green space between the sidewalk and the. So now the, the proposal will have another parcel here with a building of three units. And then we'll have two buildings with three units each going in this direction. And it will actually probably come around the corner, like, right into this area, because they are going to impact Nelson path. With this.
Are they coming in the middle of the road here to go with the?
No, they're, they're gonna work, well, what they've told me, I haven't seen the final plan, but everything will be coming in this way.
Go with that road.
Go with, yes.
So there's not a curve cut over.
There's no more curve cut, no, there's no more curve cut here, but it will impact the, the parking here.
Right.
And it will affect this entire length of the sidewalk, so the question.
And, and also they will be cutting.
All the trees down there?
Well, they'll be cutting trees, obviously, but they will be cutting into that section of road to access sewer.
Right, and so.
Like they have done.
So while we, so the developer asked me if there were any considerations that town had. Because if they, they're gonna have to cut the existing sidewalk to do the installation of the sewer.
Yep.
Um, and they're gonna disturb that entire length of sidewalk. So it's a, it's a decision to, do we simply make them put the sidewalk back in the way it is? And then repay for all of the improvements that are made somewhere down the road? Or do we now?
Improvements made down the road, you're not paying for that.
It would, because it would be the extension from, okay, so we have the project from uh this intersection down Osceola, down Snow's Brook to Village Road, right, correct?
To Combs.
To Combs, yeah, to Combs, to Snow's Brook. It would be the continuation of that down Snow's Brook to the intersection of, say, Boulder Path or thereabouts. Or all the way around to come back to Village. Um, and it would be the incorporation of the sidewalk bike path, bike lane, because there's plenty of room to do that. It would mean if they went ahead and just made whatever improvements they were going to do to the existing sidewalk or replace it or whatever, do we want to incorporate that into the future plan at this point in time?
So we would.
Along with that.
So it would be at the next, so for, I guess the question is, do you want them to save that? Do we want to ask them to save the money that they would spend on the existing sidewalk to just put it back the way it is? Or do we want them to save that and um incorporate it into our project, right? And then ask H U B to go back, start ladder, and have a project from Village going around the.
Village to Village, yep, exactly.
To do Snow's Brook.
Which makes sense.
Um, and value, and, and do that as the next road project.
Well, but the, the concern I have is, at what stage do the owners of these new units have any feedback in this? Say if you let it go a certain way and have an agreement with Tyrell to do something.
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden these units are sold, they're occupied by six, ten species, and they say, we don't want that.
It's not on their property, it's on our property.
Okay, now this one has a, but within the right. But as a butter, do they have a right to uh complain about something that they're going to do?
Well, he would ask for their, and for.
No, that's, that's kind of what I'm getting at, is, you know, we'll be similar that. I think, I, I think the plan always was to have a bike lane, right? Right, no, I, I get it, it's, the question I have now is that if these units are built in front of the parking that we've already granted them. You know, I, I know that we've had issues with the one units of, of existing building, the parking things up. We've uh, um, on that issue, that part of the issue, we've, we've committed to getting together, and I thought I was talking to the chairwoman of the planning board a couple days ago, Wendy, about getting together and discussing a new, uh, taking a look at the, at the uh on-road parking that we have. And we'll be committed to get something to town.
Right.
Town meeting on the issue of um on-street parking, um. That's what I'm getting at, because maybe that, in the public hearings we have with that, could be a way to. Oh, no, I, I get it, I'm just looking at the future and the cost and, you know, people might, people.
Yeah, so, so if you're on that, that corner, you've got now, you've got municipal parking, you've got your lot.
Exactly.
You're gonna be looking out on cars.
Right.
Yeah.
And you know, there's people coming in, I, see, I just don't know the answer, I think though, so many moving groups have got this. I'm just trying to get a grip on what we're expecting, what that was obviously.
Maybe temporarily.
Yeah.
Right, exactly, and I, I think that if, if we have a developer that's going to, that section of sidewalk is going to be improved. I, I don't really see the, the positive side of putting it back in and then tearing it up in two years. It, it seems to me we.
Why does he have, have that? They've got to put something, they can't leave it.
No, but I'm saying is that we, we have to leave, that we would do the project in twenty two.
Or do, or just do that section project.
From Village Road to Village Road?
No, I'm not, I'm, we might not have the money or the wherewithal to do all of that, or you could do that section in front of those buildings.
Well, it's in the C I P though.
I guess it's in the C I P, but we're, you're having trouble finding. You, you're talking just on, or way around to Village, basically. Yep. See, I don't know where we're gonna sit with our C I P with the, with the plans and everything else. I also don't know where we're gonna sit on being able to get contractors to do stuff. So that's, I, I think we've got a, a great lesson this morning, this afternoon, about people bidding million dollar projects.
Well, I think they're more apt to bid million dollars for more projects, I think if they start splitting up again.
But what I'm saying is, maybe have Tyrell do this as part of their party. You know, they're gonna have to disturb us, but we want it, we built this, I don't know if we have that option.
Well, you keep, without doing the road, you can't have them build anything that's going to be usable down in the future. Because you're not gonna have them just pave a section beside the road, and you want to put it beside it. That's not.
So it's the only way that you can.
You're going to address drainage and.
Do we know which building you're building first?
They really like to read at the same time.
I mean, quickly, I mean.
And quickly, they, they want to start this far.
So we finish.
Yeah, they, honestly, they, they told me that they have a contractor, a builder, that they're ready to go, which is why they're planning, and why they're doing it in as soon as as they can. So it isn't anything we have to decide today, but it is something that we're, we're not going to have six months to think about it. It's gonna, the, the plan is going to be presented, and if they don't get it approved in one day, it's gonna be probably.
The question is, what do they do, what do they replace it with, while we wait, say, two years to get it done? That's, that's the question I'm asking, it's. Well, it's either gonna be the original or what our plan is presented with. Yeah, but if our plan is meant to be, and they were asked to be managed to help us now, that could be three years down the road. Or what, even for the two years, if our time has.
Well, then that'd be that you're, I, I didn't, that's what I'm asking, can we do this, can we do this, can we?
I would, I would, I would, you know, kind of, I guess my way of thinking would be to have a, I would look at going village to village as the next logical step, okay, of our road.
Because we're coming.
Project.
To come to upfront, to come to.
Correct, I, I, I get it. And then I would, I would get a, and I would, I would convey that to the developers, and I would get a sense of what they feel, you know, how they. The cost of whatever they, is that they want to do, and their participation, you know, with us. You know, I guess that's how I would approach it.
Right, like, it may take us two years to get there, but at least we aren't going to be ripping something up in two years.
But they just. What I wanted to hear is, a long time to get to, to be with us, and have them come up with that amount of money that it would have cost them to do that, that they're gonna give us.
Right.
When we do the road project, and we have that money elsewhere compared to right now.
Right, but I would, I would also, as part of that, so the planning board is okay with it. I would say to go back to H U B now, and, and have them give us a, a work uh process here to do the engineering from village to village, uh, to, around Snow's Brook Road, and get that design to the same level that the, the project we're getting ready to do is designed to.
Except another conversation.
Funding, funding in two thousand twenty two.
No, we have fifty eight thousand dollars.
So we need it for the match on the green.
Well, we do, unless we're going to put, we're going to be twenty two budget.
But here's another thing that's, if you look at Tyrell's master plan, village to village doesn't exist the way we are.
Right, but, but Snow's Brook does, but Snow's Brook, if we come Snow's Brook down and walk it around to both Village, and where do you, where do you have, you have right beyond Boulder Path?
Well, I think they were gonna have an entrance there.
Oh.
And the master plan.
The master plan blocks out their entrance.
It blocks out the current Village Road, I think.
Entrances on either.
Further out.
That utilize the Village Road intersections, those going to parking lots instead of.
Right, that's, that's.
But the, the entrances themselves are still, it's just, it's not a road, it's not a continuous road. It's, it goes into different parking lots and.
I, I get that, that's, that's the topic, the target to get.
Right, but, but I don't think any of the current master plan that we've seen from Tyrell interrupts Snow's Brook Road. So as far as continuing with improvements to Snow's Brook Road and installing the bike pedestrian concept, right, is, but. Is, but.
That goes to Boulder Path. Snow's Brook ends at Boulder Path.
Well, and then it comes down.
Yeah, but the part of paving.
The part that we would be paving, we'd have a small section of that.
Right.
But it's, it has the same, um, concept and the same look.
You want to have a continuation of, of whatever we do going down the Village Road.
Right.
When you start to come around it, it's wanting to be continuous.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, I mean, that is one of the worst, um, sidewalks that we have. We have constant flooding in there and can't use it at all in the winter. I mean, I think this is a, is a very good opportunity.
And also that section from, um, from, um, Osceola down to Village is jam-packed in the wintertime with people walking in the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I mean, that's one of the worst, worst sections.
It, it is, it, it was, it's even bad nowadays.
You know?
That's why, you know, to pay attention to this.
And, and so I, you know, I would just say that if we brought our engineers on and, and had them work right from the get-go, ready to develop, that we could, we'd make this more seamless because.
Whenever we do it.
Right, whenever, whenever we do it, because everything was there.
I'm just trying to figure out who's, who's finance and who's engineers.
Well, I like your idea, like the best rowing, the money, so we can, we can have, and that would be another big task for H E B. They could look at.
Price it.
And price out what would be spent on the sidewalk and drainage and everything else. Fifty thousand dollars, whatever it is, we could have the developer s program. And we could use that in our funding request to town meeting for that.
That portion of it, right?
Right, that portion of the road, if there's wire.
Wire there. So in essence, we have a better assessment to them. Um, and, and I think that would, that would be a good way, but I think we should bring H E B on as quickly as we can to, to get that done while the conversation is going on.
That makes sense, so at least we have a baseline about the cost of, 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 right, it's like, potentially a plan for it, even if it isn't.
And because we're not gonna do the infrastructure work this year, what we would do to get back to our portion of the grant is put more money.
Put more money. I mean, it's the same thing that if, if we absolutely have to replace some, um, parts, or we have to make emergency repairs, or we replace guardrails or whatever, we're gonna have to go back to the town meeting in twenty-two anyway. Right?
Yep. So maybe the larger, it might be just a bit.
Maybe, well, and that's, that's the other thing we've been looking on is tacking this.
Gone to the.
To the, to the federal.
Right.
Mm-hmm. The federal.
It makes it a, a really cool project for somebody.
All the way down.
Yes.
Yeah. Maybe we get up to two, two and a half million to do that entirely. Maybe somebody will. Yeah.
They'll delay anyways.
Right, so I will reach out to H E B. And get that.
Okay, I'm gonna go back up the agenda and just pick up the things that we missed. Um, calendar review, we have a special meeting at three o'clock on Monday. And that was initially, we were gonna review bids, but we don't have a bid, so we're gonna be talking about where do we go next for, for the live project.
I could, um, you said you had to leave at four fifteen, do you mind?
Can we do it earlier?
I can do, I'd love to, I can do it at two thirty, okay? I might be able to make two.
What's your time? Do you have any time requirements on this? Can you do two thirty, three o'clock?
Or I can do, if you have something.
I, I made it, I'm, I'm, um.
Just don't let yourself.
No, no, it's a ferry, I, I'm, I'm just gonna make sure I make the ferry, it's an event over. Yeah, Rhonda's after, they're, I'm taking a view of one of the ferries, one of the ferry's across. Coming back here? Coming back here.
Yeah.
Two thirty, I'm sure, two o'clock probably. How about do two thirty and give us all your. But I, I think from two thirty to twelve, we can. Okay. Cause I don't have any time since then, too much.
We're kind of pushing.
All right, so maybe, well, maybe you notice.
No, I was saying that for me. Our next regular meeting, uh, we have not determined when we're gonna do that, August.
I know you would not say.
Are you traveling all of the year? Uh, no, I was maybe in August sometime, but I was, but not, not.
I'm, I'm gonna be traveling on, it's gonna be August, but I'm.
So do you want to go to the eleven? Do you want to go to the eleven? I'm gonna do eleven.
August eleventh?
Either, either that or the. Eleven, Monday works.
And then that way we have everything.
Okay. And the next planning board meeting is August the fourth.
Um, also I'd like to come up with, uh, the month that followed, um, nature is, um, planning to come here a lot of the ground on September eighteenth, they have been planned again. So they're actually gonna be running two events this year, like, uh, somewhere on the seacoast. And, so that's a Saturday, uh, you know, work will be, um, a little bit easier, um, kind of. That event will be, um, pretty much not a big one. Um, also one other thing, calendar wise, um, swear, we will be swearing in, uh, the changes in, uh, people jumping jobs and the public safety hazard on July thirtieth at nine.
Down here?
Down here.
Down the thirty.
Great. Um, you have a water sewer second quarter.
Yep.
Rest of it. It does, it's tall?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah. Me, um, chapel committee, one, which is.
Yeah.
Language over to our.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, board concerns and directors.
There's a little, um, just a good thing, uh, have you guys seen the graffiti, um, in the, uh, way on the, on the forty on the valley, it's a minor beating, not the one by, not the one way, uh, athletic project.
The one for the.
Yeah, the Snow's Brook.
No, I haven't, I haven't driven through that.
I can remember, as now it looks like. Nothing to me, but just, it isn't much.
It's.
We'll take a look.
It isn't, it isn't much.
And correspondence we have about the, uh.
Trees.
Well, we have about the trees, but also about the, um, signboard up on the library.
Oh, yes, thank you, but I, I talked to Warren again about that, it's, it's not a big deal, they're just wondering if it's quite a place that's more. So people can see the map, he's been a finished painter at Oxford, the president of the water value improvement association for, for the audience. And we have a signboard, uh, very close to the library, uh, that had an old map of, uh, A I A would like to put the new map in there and perhaps have a little bit more common.
So I'm not putting any crosses right next to the best.
I don't know, sideline's, yeah, yeah, no, I, I, they're open, yeah, I just have to be on that. And plowing, I talked to Jim about plowing bit. And the sideline would be another.
We, we also don't have, uh, where the, the pull-off is or the losses, that's not really. And we have very limited, very.
Will we, close it to the library building, makes sense? We've got time for library trustees on that. There we go.
Whose land is the, is evil?
The Zebra is on, on. Or Tensbury.
Should be a better place for it. Uh, as I said, it's not, not a big deal, it just gotta be, it makes more sense if you have a map.
Yeah, a lot of people.
Don't even see it.
Don't even see it.
And like you were saying, it doesn't even make sense, even if you pull it out of it. Over, it doesn't make sense, it makes sense sometimes else. Yeah, move it completely sometimes else.
Yeah.
So.
I don't know, I don't know where the right place is for it yet, but I don't think a lot of people are using it right now because it's.
I think, I think getting it closer to the town center and potentially along the.
May, maybe, yeah.
If we incorporate.
Maybe the thought would be to have several of them.
You could put it near, somewhere near the bridge. He said he's, uh.
I think, I think there needs to be some, I think it's, it's trivial enough.
Right.
I, I would say.
People get out there.
Right. We'll get out there. Yeah.
How about down by the bridge? You've got.
But I, but I, I like the library location, I think it's perfect, except like people at the crossroads, where you are coming up. Or coming down.
Right.
I think once you're down there, you're lost.
Yeah.
And that's when you get asked, yeah, that's the other thing, Warren was saying, he's out, he's out there, he's out for getting questions.
We can find a different place after library meeting.
This time we did.
Yeah, and it would be protected if it was behind the plant and, uh, that, the, the signpost, the, the, the street signpost.
Were you guys on the, the email about Brenda, um, set around a little while ago about changing the sign to make it a little bit more, uh, or make it, I think we came up with something like a little more, uh, trailhead and parking, it says that what we have now. You have that email, maybe we can incorporate all of that and then move.
Yeah, there's also. A little there to, uh, to a guide, that might be a good place.
You mean, yeah?
Yeah. People come over and read.
They're covered in it, they're covered.
Yeah.
The lungs are made of stone. Somewhere in that area?
Well, I, I think closer to. Yeah.
Yeah. Right, and you think you can incorporate that, changing the sign, or something like, but you have that email, right?
Do you have anything else? Alrighty. Thank you all. Four twenty-six. Anything?